Hi students and welcome to today's live IELTS class. My name is Adrian and I'm streaming to you from beautiful Victoria here in Western Canada. I hope that you're all having an awesome week. Students in this class, we're looking at an IELTS listening section. We are going to listen to some audio, answer some questions, practise our listening skills, and talk about some strategies to improve your listening scores. Welcome Katan, hi Aisha, nice to see you. So Yumya, nice to see you Ariadna, great to have students ready to learn. Everybody, the topics for this listening section will be a part one and part two. Part one will focus on a person looking to apply for a town councillor position. And we'll look at a part two, which is talking about a business meeting among three people. It will be a tech meeting, they're going to be discussing the development of their software enterprise. Students, these listening materials, this class is presented to you by aehelp.com. For academic IELTS help, visit us there. For the general IELTS, check us out at G I E L T S help dot com. These are our websites, they power these live classes. You have six full practice exams there. The academic looks like this, you can join and get all of the practice exams, videos, materials. It's a one-time payment, you get lifetime access, you get more of these live classes. Just click that red button and you're good to go. We're an IDP affiliate, we are a British council partner, we're an IELTS test registration centre. I'm a certified British council agent. We help thousands of students every single month to improve their English for IELTS success. General IELTS looks like this, it's got this green background, you can click this big red button there. Use the discount code TOGETHER9 for an extra 10% discount. And again, it's just a one-time payment, we don't have you paying each month. It's just once and that's it and you're good to go. So check that out and register to be a premium user and you'll get lots more help for improving. If you're curious about those premium classes, what they look like, you can look at this link here. I'll drop that into the chat for you. And then you'll know what else you get. The premium students get classes on Thursdays and Fridays as well. And you can link your apps, academic IELTS help, general IELTS help on your mobile phones to learn and practise through the mobile applications. IELTS underscore A E help and G IELTS help, that's our Instagram. You can get more help even there. And if you still have questions, just send me an email, adrian@aehelp.com or admin@aehelp.com. So right now, we have listening, everybody should be involved. We'll be looking for some questions and answers in the chat. We have speaking class tomorrow, where you have a chance to speak with me through Zoom and YouTube. And then for premium users, we'll have a task one writing class on Thursday and then a speaking class on Friday. Now, very importantly, students, I am out of my office next week, all next week. So there are no classes next week. So the 22nd to the 28th, there will be no classes, but then we will resume regular scheduling from September 30th. So just one week off and then we're back to regular classes. We have this video here on YouTube for you, it's a new one, it's really good. It's for the speaking section and you can check that out. I'll put that link into the chat as well. Students, subscribe to the channel so you get notifications of all the new videos, materials, tips and strategies for the IELTS exam. Okay, let's just jump right in. So we're going to be looking at test number six from our exam book. And I'm going to play the audio, I'll put my headphones on if you have a pair of headphones. It's a great idea so you can hear the audio clearly. Students, please keep in mind, in this listening, you'll have an example to get you ready. But these days, in the official exam, in the real exam, there's no example. So they go right into part one, okay? All right, welcome Olivia, Kostub, nice to see all of you. Students, let's jump back over to our website here. This is where we find the audio. For those of you who are premium users, you go to your My Student account. In your My Student account, you'll find lots of goodies like computer-based practice exams. You'll find a full interactive course that gives you tips and strategies. And then you'll find downloadable PDFs, exam books. You'll get hundreds of videos for all of the different sections. And then your audio CDs. So here, we're going to scroll all the way to CD six, test one, and get ready to listen. You can share your answers in the chat, but I recommend keeping them separate. Give everybody a fair chance to answer on their own. We'll go through the answers together afterwards, okay? All right, so let's, let's do this, here we go, everybody.
This recording is copyrighted by Two Think One Solutions Inc. and World ESL Tutors. You will hear several different recordings and you will answer questions on what you hear. There will be time given to read the instructions and questions and you will be given a chance to check your work. The recordings will be played only once. The test is made up of four sections. At the end of the test, you will have 10 minutes to transfer your answers to the answer sheet. Now turn to section one. Listening, section one. You will hear a conversation between a man and a woman concerning the requirements of running for municipal office. First, you have some time to look at questions one to five. You will see that there is an example. This time only, the conversation relating to this question will be played.
Good morning, you've reached the information office for municipal affairs. This is Florence speaking.
Good morning Florence, my name is Walter and I'd like some information on running for municipal office in the upcoming election.
You're in the right place. The first piece of information I'll need from you is the specific office you'd like to run for.
Town councillor, I'd imagine.
The man says he would like to run for town councillor, so this has been indicated for you. Now we begin. You should answer the questions as you listen because you will not hear the recording a second time. Listen carefully and answer questions one to five.
Good morning, you've reached the information office for municipal affairs. This is Florence speaking.
Good morning Florence, my name is Walter and I'd like some information on running for municipal office in the upcoming election.
You're in the right place. The first piece of information I'll need from you is the specific office you'd like to run for.
Town councillor, I'd imagine.
Great, I need some information from you in order to get you on the ballot list September. Are you ready to get started?
Yes, I'm ready.
This should only take a few minutes. Okay then, let's start with your surname Walter.
Colchester, C O L C H E S T E R.
And Walter is spelt in the regular fashion?
Yes, W A L T E R.
Okay, next I need your date of birth.
I was born the 11th of December 1979.
The 11th of December 1979 makes you 36 years old at the time of the September elections. Is this correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Great, I'll need your national insurance number.
My national insurance number is W C 28569833.
W C 28569833.
That's right.
Great, and the last pieces of information I need from you are your current address and phone number.
I live at 23 Shaftberry Lane Plymouth and you can reach me on 01752667835.
Wonderful, next I'll give you some information on running for municipal office.
You now have some time to look at questions six to 10.
Always follow with the audio students, don't get lost on those, just keep going six to 10.
Now listen to the rest of the interview and answer questions six to 10.
First of all, you should know that you're one of 15 candidates so far that have registered for the four town councillor positions. Since the deadline for registration is in a week, I do not anticipate this number increasing by more than a candidate or two. Second, please know that there are three all candidate debates, of which you must attend two in order to qualify for office.
I have to participate in debates?
Yes, that's right. They are on the 14th and 28th of August and the final one is held on the 4th of September. They'll be held at the local community hall on Ashford Street. Each one begins at 6 o'clock in the evening.
That sounds fine, is there anything else I need to know?
Yes, there is. Do you plan on spending money on your campaign? This could be on adverts in newspapers, promotional signage or other advertising.
Well, I was planning on taking an ad out in the local paper, yes.
Not a problem, but please keep in mind that there is a strict £2,000 limit on campaign spending for town councillors. All expenses must be reported to this office. Over spending will result in disqualification.
I don't think that should be a problem.
Oh, and one more thing, Mr. Colchester. There is a £50 registration fee for each candidate for town councillor. You may pay this fee over the phone by credit card, with a cheque in the post or in person with cash, credit or debit. How would you like to pay?
I live right by the office, so I'll drop by this afternoon to pay in person.
My assistant will take care of that for you. I think that is all I need from my end. Do you have any questions?
I don't think so, thanks for your help.
You're welcome and good luck.
That is the end of section one. You will now have half a minute to check your answers.
All right, students, use that half minute to check those answers. Let me just go back to our website here, stop the audio. Again, students, that website is aehelp.com. For the academic IELTS and for the general IELTS, it's G IELTS help dot com. The listening for general and academic is the same, by the way. All right, let's go through the answers together now. So again, just keep in mind, students, that on the exams these days, there is absolutely no example given. So they start right there with the questions and answers, okay? All right, so the first piece of information that the administrator asked for is the name. Now, in speaking part one, or sorry, speaking, listening, in listening part one, the speakers usually will go a little bit slower, it's natural, but they'll go a little bit slower. They'll spell out the names, they'll often spell them twice or ask for a correction. So just be patient, really patiently, carefully follow the audio. You don't need to rush, just go with the audio, not in front of it, not behind it, okay? So here, the name of this candidate for town councillor is, very good Aisha, it's Colchester. Okay, and you can write all capital letters, but I definitely recommend writing with the correct letters. So big C and then the rest of them all small, it's the correct way. It's the common way to write this. I do get that question all the time, can I use all capital letters? Yes, you can, but I think if you're going for a high band, like a seven, eight, nine, you should learn when you need to use uppercase, when you need to use lowercase. It is faster, it's better for spelling too. So use the correct lettering. Big C because it's a name and then it's O L C H E S T E R, Colchester, okay? All right, did everybody get that? I see Aisha got that, very good Aisha. Then, they actually don't say the address next, they say the date of birth. And because it's all one question set, okay, it's a form. Be careful students, sometimes what they will do is they'll suddenly, it'll seem like they'll jump to number three. And that's often because they'll repeat it, so they'll say it one more time a little bit later. So it does follow the sequence. But when you're looking at a form like this, you want to look at all of the information. Just in case you miss one, you still catch the other ones, okay? So when you review these questions, you should realise, okay, I need to listen for this person's name, address, city, date of birth, phone number and national insurance number. So I need to listen for all of these, okay? What was his date of birth? When is this person born? They gave the day, the month and the year, so you want to listen for all of those. And Mohammed, the months here are proper nouns, so they take a capital. So you have to go big December, okay? Same thing Aisha, it's a big D, okay? So Aisha, you have the correct answer, but they would mark that wrong because you're using a small d, okay? So it should be 11 December 1979. That is the correct way to write his birth date. The order doesn't matter, you can write 1979, December 11th, you can write December 11th, 1979. I definitely recommend using the short form for the months, it's faster. You miss less information when you use the short form. You don't need the period, you could just write D E C, they will still give that to you, okay, students? But you want to write the most efficient answers. Let me just make a note of this for you because this is important learning, okay? So in the listening, students, in the listening, always write the most efficient answers, okay? So use a short form for days and months, okay? That's definitely the right way to approach this. That way you save time and you're able to focus more on the other answers, other parts of the audio. Does that make sense, everybody? Okay, so always, always look for those most efficient answers. You want to practise those before you go sit your exam. All right, then they gave his address and this was simply just a number. They tried to keep it relatively simple for part one, so it's something Shaftberry Lane. What was it? What was the number there? It was just a number, right? Very good Aisha, it was 23. So this is just simply 23 Shaftberry Lane. Don't write extra information, don't write information that's not necessary because they can and will mark you wrong, okay? So just the absolute most efficient answers. So far, it's Colchester, 23, 11, Deetz, 1979. Always use numbers instead of words, by the way, students, don't write 11 or don't write 23, okay? What was his phone number? Sometimes these numbers come kind of quickly, so you do have to pay attention. I did write it down. What's his number? Anybody get his phone number? I jotted it down real quick. Hopefully, some of you were able to catch it as well, okay? Gaming Zone, you can practise free on our website as well. We have a free version for you on the website. Okay, while you're thinking about what his phone number was or you're looking at your notes and your answers, keep in mind, students, that on the websites, again, there are free versions, so you can try the demo. The same one is on academic as well. And then when you're listening for numbers, there's, there's absolutely a good way to do that with our website.
Numbers, zero.
The extra audio.
One, two, three, 12, 13, 14, 60, 70, 80.
Okay, so that's the extra audio on the website. Make sure to use the extra audio on the website, it's super useful. It's a native British speaker. You get familiar with the accent and catching those numbers quickly. You can play it faster as well. So you get used to those quick, quick numbers, that will definitely save you a few scores, okay? Let's see, phone numbers, nobody got the phone number? That was his phone number. You don't need to worry about spaces, I just kind of put that in there for fun, but you don't need to worry about them, okay? All right, so that was the phone number. Okay, again, listen for the numbers, try to repeat me. It's good to repeat the listening audio, so when you're practising at home, then repeating listening audio is a really good way to improve listening. So listen and repeat the audio when you are practising for IELTS at home. This is a great way to improve both your listening and speaking skills. Okay, so practise that, okay? All right, so repeat after me, students, 01752667835. Okay, let's try to do that a little bit faster. Are you ready, students? We can do it even a little bit faster, 01752667835. Try that, okay? So when you get really proficient in English, you can do numbers fast, 01752667835, okay? All right, so practise repetition, practise listening. Let's look at the national insurance number, I think some of you got that. I can check it because I wrote it down as well. So it's got a couple of letters, W C, yes, 2856, 2856, yes, and then 9833. Let me just reference that, 2856, yes, 9833, yeah, very good. Okay, so you guys got it, whoever got that number got it right. Very nice, well done, okay? Good job Mohammed, Yasinie, good job Aisha, nice listening, good job. Great, excellent, give you guys a thumbs up there in the chat, you know what, give you two, boom. It's my actual thumb, it's a picture of my hand. Is my other hand out? One of them, okay. All right, students, so then you had a little bit of a break and it said, okay, now take a look at questions six to 10. Students, make sure to follow the instructions of the audio. So when the, in the IELTS, when it says, look at questions six to 10, don't start looking at questions one to five and checking them, making sure you got them right. You'll have a chance for that at the end of the audio anyway, so keep with the audio. So when it says, look at questions six to 10, look at questions six to 10, okay? So here, it says, complete the table below, write no more than two words for each answer. There's a second debate. How many debates are there, students? So try to always go above and beyond the audio, challenge yourself, ask other questions. How many debates does this, do they have? Nguyen Tran, very good, Nguyen says there's three debates, good, somebody was listening. So when you're practising at home and in class with your peers, okay? Go above and beyond the questions in the listening section. Challenge each other for extra questions and information. This is a great way to improve your active listening skills, okay? All right, so you want to do that. Shaheera says, yes, there will be three debates, I remember that. Okay, and how many do they have to participate in? So whoever wants to be a town councillor, work for the city, how many debates do they have to, do they have to participate in? Two, right? It says, you have to participate in at least two of the three debates. And then they give the dates, they tell you when these debates are. Two of them are in August and the third one is in September, right? Okay, the second debate, Aisha, would be August the 28th, right? So here again, using that nice short form, A U G 28, that's all you need. A U G 28, if you got that, you got it correct, okay? August 28th, what time? What time is the debate? Students, you had to get this, what's the correct answer? These are some of the give me answers, they're kind of easy ones. Mohammed says 6 o'clock, yeah, 6 o'clock is not enough. They might not give it to you for that, Mohammed, it's a, it's a roll of the dice. You might, you might lose that point if you just say 6 o'clock. Yes, Ariadna, it's 6pm, you have to have the exact date, it's a 24-hour clock in this case, so it has to be 6pm, be very careful with that, students. So 6pm is the correct answer or you could have 18 o'clock, like that, that would be also okay if you wrote 18. But it has to be the exact time, yeah, because they say 6 in the evening, okay? All right, if you wrote 6 evening, they'll probably give that to you as well, okay? But 6pm, Aisha, you can't do 6 o'clock in the evening because it's no more than two words. Pay careful attention, that's a sneaky one, okay? So if you're doing the paper-based exam and you go 6 in the evening, you get that wrong, even though it's the right idea. IELTS wants to make sure you're following the instructions carefully. They're not trying to trick you, just making sure you're paying attention. Okay, then we had a few more questions here. What is the campaign spending limit? Students, how much can these people spend on their campaigns? 2,000, very good Kostub, and you don't need to write pounds because you have pounds right here. So all you do is you just write the number. Always pay attention to the given information, okay? I'm going to make a note of that for you as well, so a couple of important tips there for saving some scores on your IELTS listening. Tip one, pay attention to the question instructions, number of words, et cetera, okay? Tip number two, pay attention to the given information. Often, you do not need to write symbols as these are provided, okay? So be really careful about that, all right? Okay, all right, again, all of, so a lot of these, maybe not all, but a lot of these tips that I'm giving you, you'll find them on the websites when you go to your full online course, you go to the listening section and then you get into the interactive course. And there, in the interactive course, you're going to find the instructions for what you need to do for each of these different kinds of questions, your overall active listening strategies, so on and so forth. And you can play through all the audio and interactive slides, okay? So that's found again in your course at either aehelp.com or you can find it at G IELTS help dot com. Okay, all right, so check it out. Okay, students, let's finish off this part one and then we'll go on to part two. How much is the registration fee? So he's got to pay to register, no surprise there, that's usually the way things go. Alix says it's £50, it is £50, I wrote that down. Thought it was 24 seconds, but I looked at my notes and yes, it's £50, very good. very nice um Mona Mohammed Aisha Ali very nice got that okay now this type of question is an interesting one it says choose three letters A to F what are three ways to pay the registration fee um instead of staring at the uh options here what I do instead for these kinds of questions is write down what I hear so I wrote down credit card uh check by post in person cash credit uh check or something like that uh they don't talk about direct debit I didn't write that down uh check by post yes uh credit card in person that sounds correct cash by post no you never send money through the mail that's just silly uh credit card over the phone yes a check over the phone um yeah no I don't think that's really possible so it's B C and E and why did I get that so quickly I use logic and my notes okay for these multi multiple choice questions students as I've said in classes before you need to take notes use the note paper that they provide you for these types of questions okay even in the computer based practice exam you can use the paper they give you with the instructions on it it's got a full side that's just blank that you can use uh so B C and E uh students how did you do what did you get from um what did you get from ten on that part so ten questions the perfect score is ten ten out of ten how did you do how did you perform in part one on the IELTS when you're getting ready if you want to get a band six point five or seven you should get at least eight or nine of these part one questions correct Mohammed says I got nine that's very good Mona got nine Ali says a hundred percent very good um yeah eight is still very good Ali uh nicely done Aisha seven uh for part one you wanna get more for part one you wanna get more than seven okay this is the easiest part it only gets more and more difficult from here as you will see there's a big jump in difficulty between part one and part two uh get ready for that students I'm going to even give you a note for that okay so there is a big jump in difficulty uh between uh part one and part two uh part two to part three part three to part four I don't think the the difficulty is that much more but I think between part one and part two there's a big jump okay and we're going to hear that right now uh because we're going to do part two right now uh you probably saw me reviewing the topics when the instructions were happening that's a really good strategy or trick almost you could say um and you can do that if a proctor says oh don't look at part two or three then that's not correct after the test you can tell the exam center that the proctor told you you can't look at the other questions but there's no rule like that it allows you the test allows you the computer based exam allows you to move through the test so uh you should be able to look at the other parts okay according to the central IELTS IDP and Cambridge testing uh you can look at any question at any time during the listening exam okay and so in the beginning when they're giving you the instructions like this is uh produced by the ESL examination board you will only hear the audio once you should be looking at the topic so you get a good idea of what is part two about what is part three about here I can see that it's something about workers and sales and downloads some kind of meeting and that's good information that gets my brain ready for the audio okay alright uh so let's do it let's listen to this
now turn to section two take some time to look at questions eleven to sixteen listening section two you will hear a recording of three people discussing strategy for an upcoming meeting with investors first you have some time to look at questions eleven to sixteen now listen carefully to the interview and answer questions eleven to sixteen
thank you both for coming in for this preparatory meeting as you know we have an extremely important meeting with our investors next week while I'm more than confident in the work we have done over the past year we must be prepared to justify our progress to our investors after all they are the ones who pay our salaries first I want to review the positive outcomes we've achieved over the past year this will make up the bulk of our presentation Amy would you like to give us a rundown on this front
sure we've achieved many positive outcomes over the past year and furthermore we've achieved more in the past four months than in the previous eight months so we're certainly showing significant progress first and most important sales of our app are up fifty percent from last year totaling five hundred and eighty six thousand units in the past twelve months up from three hundred and ninety thousand units in the previous year this is great progress second we're achieving a higher purchase rate while our sales are up fifty percent the number of total downloads has remained relatively constant this means our conversion rate has increased fifty percent as well this clearly demonstrates that our efforts in this area have been fruitful by targeting the conversion rate instead of the raw download rate we have raised our standing and search result priority within the application stores this will eventually lead to a higher download rate and even more sales the upward trajectory here is very clear we have also decreased the complaint rate from two point five percent to one point five percent while our goal is to get this rate as close to zero as possible this decrease represents a positive outcome and shows that our efforts to increase customer satisfaction have been successful
yes but if I may interrupt I actually have to disagree on one point I don't believe it should be a goal to get the complaints rate down to zero while we certainly don't want a high complaint rate the resources spent on getting the complaint rate down are better spent on increasing downloads and increasing the conversion rate I think this is an important point to be made to the investors while we certainly value the quality of our product we are much more focused on maximizing the value of the investor's investment I think such attack will go over well with the investors
you now have some time to look at questions seventeen to twenty now listen to the rest of the interview and answer questions seventeen to twenty
that's a great point we really want to emphasize that we are doing everything we can to optimize and maximize the money and resources we've been supplied with speaking of which are we all agreed that we will be asking for twenty percent increase in operating budget
yes
yes
good and how are you going to justify such an increase
well certainly by pointing to the statistical outcomes you previously referenced but also by our need to expand we need to increase our catalog of apps and to do this we will need to hire at least two additional developers in addition to this I think we are now at the point in our business where hiring a market analyst would be justified such a person could be charged with finding niches to exploit within the market right now our operations in this regard are rudimentary at best and an expert in the field could help increase our sales volume significantly such an expert salary might take up five percent of our operating budget but could lead to a ten percent increase in sales or more the five percent difference would result in a net income increase of almost a hundred thousand pounds
I agree hiring a market analyst is long overdue one more justification for a budget increase is in across the board pay rise if only at the rate of inflation two percent say this would go a long way to increasing worker morale and output quality in addition to this
that is the end of section two
good job
you will now have half a minute to check your answers
the challenging part two okay uh let's go back to the website and yes students the IELTS can be that difficult and a part two can sound exactly like that there were three accents there uh two from the UK and one from New Zealand by the way so um the IELTS can have Australian accents it can have British accents Canadian American uh New Zealand so it can have any any English speaking accent most uh of them are British but not all they sometimes surprise you so uh let's take a look uh answer these questions and you'll have that much better of an idea of how to do this uh listening for your upcoming tests okay number eleven uh let's do it together who pays the salaries of the workers in the recording if you didn't get it right away don't worry I mean they talk about it so much that you should figure it out by the end of this okay Mohammed says it's the investors absolutely Mohammed yeah I mean they keep talking about the investors they even say at the end that they want a pay increase right so it's obvious uh that it's the investors so sometimes if you miss a an answer just be patient they'll say it again or you realize that like oh yeah okay that's gonna be the answer for the first one anyway right so it's the investors common noun small i is okay single answer filling in the blank all good okay um and then the table so here we have the current year so this is this year and this is the change from previous now students beyond the IELTS if you're into tech if you're in computers if you're a programmer if you're a developer this is a this is a basically a a meeting it's a software dev progress sales summary meeting right like you could be sitting in a in an office having this same meeting next week um in a different context okay so what were the sales uh they said it's up fifty percent which was a big improvement from the previous year I think they said the previous year it was up with just by a bit it was three hundred and ninety and in this one it was five hundred and eighty six thousand you can just do a K or you can do zero 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 yeah Mohammed you need that K after the big K okay Mohammed Yisini it's not just five hundred and eighty six it's five hundred and eighty six thousand units yeah big K Mohammed big K big K okay Aisha same thing big K okay if you're gonna do thousands you have to you have to deal with a big K everybody okay so let me just make a quick note of that make sure you cash that thousand part okay so five hundred and eighty six K equals five hundred and eighty six thousand okay you don't need the comma though you can put the comma in if you want but no no you don't need it don't put a period though okay alright um okay uh downloads that's filled conversion rate uh this was pretty easy hopefully you got that what was the conversion rate I'm just gonna put it in cuz I'm sure a lot of you got that fifty percent fifty percent okay up fifty percent number fourteen was tricky you had to be really careful number fourteen you had to do a little bit of math careful for these little math question types in the listening so here it says down by how much uh they said the change was from two point five percent in the last year down to one point five this year so uh the answer there you're right Ariadna is one okay so this was one here yeah be very careful Aisha make sure you can hear the difference between fifty and fifteen um fifty and suddenly with a D sound fifty fifteen fifty fifteen okay um and this was one this last one was one okay alright a couple of multiple choice questions here what point do the it two investors disagree on you always wanna listen to this getting the conversion rate down or getting sorry the complaint rate down that's what they disagreed on let's see if there's something similar ways to increase conversion rate no how to convince investors no getting the complaint rate as low as possible that is my answer that is the answer possible so the correct answer is C getting the complaint rate as low as possible good job Mohammed you're doing fantastic Mona well done yeah um the trick to multiple choice students okay so the strategy to multiple choice is you need to listen for the answer if you're just looking at the answers and hope that one jumps out you're just guessing okay so you need to listen for the answer uh what is of primary importance according to the employees my answer making the investors happy uh maximizing the value of investors investment that'll make them happy uh increase the funding nope convincing the company it's A right you wanna make him happy make them money that's what makes investors happy they invest because they want money um okay good let's uh let's check the rest of this so complete the summary write no more than two words and or a number the employees are requesting a twenty percent what students what are they requesting a twenty percent what not an operating budget so no that's right Ali it was simpler students part two the answers even if the audio sounds complicated the answers are often simple so so pay attention it was just a twenty percent increase yeah in funding from the investors um this will allow the company to hire two additional plural here it's two they will hire two additional developers that's right very good Nguyen Tran very good Mohammed um developers S's are important plurals are important if you put developer you'll get it wrong if you put developers you'll get it right so Mishraji developer you'll get it wrong okay um Aisha strategist you'll get it wrong okay it's developers who will allow the company to broaden their catalog of apps they would also like to hire a this one was a tricky one this one was this one was a bit challenging okay you had to get this one it was a market analyst okay this is where I mean they're looking very good Mona very nice you got it um they're looking for band eight band nine market analyst person who checks the market checks out what's working what's not working uh which should be the costing of uh products services so yeah uh even for nineteen um uh Aisha strategist is not good uh it has to be a market analyst market analyst is the position that's a very that's a specific job position market analyst who would be in charge of finding new areas for development finally the team wants a pay raise pegged to the rate of Ali you get a thumbs up boom you got that fast nice job it is inflation yeah pegged to the rate of inflation yes nicely done nicely done students well done okay so add up your scores from twenty how much did you get from twenty part one part two combined uh if you're going for a band six point five or more you should be looking at a score of hmm north of fifteen sixteen okay so seventeen Chowduh Young is uh very good uh that that's definitely in the nice high band range okay sixteen Mishraji is good Mona eighteen is fantastic okay yep fifteen summon is still okay alright fourteen Aisha is on the lower end it's getting closer to a band six six five overall for sure why because part three and part four are even more challenging and we're going to do part three so we have part three here and then we have part four here uh we're going to do those parts okay um and we're going to do them not next week but the following week so part three will be on September thirtieth that's because I'm not here next week students okay but in the meantime you're welcome to check out the websites A E help dot com and G ILS help dot com and you can work ahead I mean you can be like ooh I'm just gonna do this all on my own um and then you go to the website you listen to part three part four uh you download the book uh from here so you've got uh uh your first IELTS book you've got your workbook you've got your second IELTS book you've got study plans and then you use those together with the audio you find those on the website um and you join the website not with a subscription we don't want your money every month we just want it once and it's not a lot it's about thirty to fifty bucks US you click that big red button you can even use that code that I gave you uh at the uh start of class together nine you can apply that for a ten percent discount uh general out students is G ILS help dot com same thing again we're an IDP affiliate British council partner click that big red button uh students tomorrow is speaking so we will Uh, students, tomorrow is speaking, so we will have a class tomorrow, which will be speaking for everybody. We'll use Zoom to talk to each other. You can practice your speaking. I'll give you band score estimates. And I hope to see you then. That's it for today. I hope you enjoyed the class, I sure did. It was fun, uh, seeing your great work and paying attention and all your chat. I'm always looking at the chat here, everybody. Um, have an awesome rest of your uh, Tuesday, wherever you are in the world, and uh, back here uh, tomorrow. I'm Adrian, I'm signing out from beautiful Victoria here in Western Canada. Bye, everyone.